I approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda.
Aye.
Please descend.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Approve consent agenda.
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment, limited to three minutes. Unless somebody wants to just go aside and call on the council. Anybody got anything they want to comment on? That's clear. New business. Vote and approve to add Mason Berry and Grant Miller to the fire department.
Are you recommending them?
Yep, hundred percent.
I don't know, I think Mason Berry looks more sketch.
Okay, but before we get into that, I want to know how many are, how many members are on the fire department firm?
There are twenty-three, we go up to twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, who said twenty-three?
Yeah, we have twenty-three, we go up to twenty-eight.
And, and me, obviously, you're not a junior fire person, but the, the junior one that we talked about last week is not Grant Miller either, correct?
Yeah.
That, that's the junior.
That's a junior.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
I make the motion we approve to add Mason Berry and Grant Miller to the fire department.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
They, they go on probationary personal. Discuss the bus stop at the corner of Ninth Street and Elizabeth, as that is now the bus stop for the kids. You want to talk about it?
Yep, we've, uh, I spoke to several of the parents and were aware of the issue that we had here a couple of weeks ago, speeding truck going through that intersection. Uh, what we've decided to do is stop the bus on Elizabeth Street, making a, basically a mobile stop sign. Uh, that will eliminate, hopefully eliminate where we're large enough where they'll at least see us. The kids will get off the bus, they'll still have to cross in front of the bus to get to one side or the other, depending on if we're.
Do you remember, you have those arms hanging out, right?
Uh, most of our buses have the arms that come out in front of the bus to keep the kids out from, in front of the, the whole, uh, our bus drivers on, especially like in, in a town like Red Junction, where a large enough body where we can kind of turn a little bit. So if we start heading up Ninth, get our lights on, we can block the road.
From now on, you'll stop on Elizabeth or?
Yeah, unless there becomes a problem and I've had, I talked to Mr. Thompson and Mr. Krieger and a couple of the other, on the other side of the, the road. If there's something else that comes up, we'll definitely take a look at doing something different, but, but.
So for now, you don't need anything from us other than if we put a thing out, like maybe on Facebook that says, "Hey, be aware, the buses are stopping on Elizabeth to pick up and drive off."
Yeah, and part of the reason we, we originally did that was we had an overcrowding issue on, on one of the buses. The bus that went to the center of the old school stop. Uh, and it, it just had way too many kids on it, so, um, in an effort to alleviate that problem, we've decided to pick up some of the kids on the west end of town and it's, it's helped greatly take that number down considerably, so.
Is that morning and night or just night?
Morning and, morning and night is what we're planning on doing.
You feeling a stew congestion in there at all? I mean, with the guy down on the corner that's got, got some stuff sitting there now, you know, he's got a trailer usually that sets backwards in there with the front pointing out. He's got one of those back trucks, plus he's got three trucks in the thing. Plus down the street, you got two or three pickups to set out on it. You don't feel that's a problem being too congested?
I, I feel like if we're at that intersection, I'm farther enough east and further enough west from the other spot. And then, you know, we're, we're gonna sit there until the kids are, to whichever side of the road they need to be.
If people were following the speed limit, it wouldn't be so bad.
Yeah.
That was my only concern was the congestion. But if the field gets to the point, then maybe we'll have to do something.
Yeah, that's something we've.
So, what time does the bus actually park there? Or, I realize approximately, but what time is it?
Uh, in the morning, I would say probably in that seven thirty-five, seven forty range. And then in the evening, today was an early hour, but typically it'd be around a little after four.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Four oh five.
Thank you for your effort.
Do we, do we need any other signage there or anything?
I, I don't think so, because we're, we're gonna be fluid for the next couple of years. Uh, we've had to eliminate some stops in, in Jefferson just because we can't, you guys got the same problem. We can't get help and trying to get bus drivers and they've made it harder to get bus drivers with the requirements to do, so, you know, I hate to, city to invest any money on anything and then, you know, six months down the road, we have to change.
If there is something safety wise, I mean, or if there's something we can do, just please come back to us, because obviously we want everybody safe and we want, you know, make this the best spot it can be, so just because, you know.
Just want to keep them safe.
Yeah, keep the communication open, but that's no big deal.
Yeah. Thank you for coming the next morning.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, we could probably request that the sheriff, the deputy there during that time would stop us. I mean, they go down that street forty, fifty mile an hour.
But.
But with this deal up here.
Well, with the bus there, you know, and, and, I mean, if they're not tall enough, they're gonna be seeing that.
That was part of the reason for another two stop signs back there at the park was because it's slowing down.
Yeah.
And plus now that you have the new equipment there, you have more people stopping right there going in there, but that won't affect you many people.
So we should be.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Anybody, any other comment? Discuss and vote on Jeremy Richards' application for tax abatement for his new shop.
How long does that last?
It's a three-year tax abatement.
Does everybody get something to go, if they build something?
Yes, if they want it, somebody built it for some reason, I don't know.
All they have to do is blackboard it.
We got a plan.
His shop isn't done yet, is it?
Pardon?
It's not done yet, his shop.
Uh-uh.
So, pretty darn close.
He probably got a completion date already on his phone.
Okay. Okay. Um, I make a motion to approve the application for tax abatement for Jeremy Richards.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Completion date nine twelve twenty-three, so almost, yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Discuss and vote on turning off cell phones that are not being used. That's during council?
No.
We.
We're being charged for cell phones that nobody uses.
That's what I was gonna ask. This is our, okay, we're still paying pretty hard.
Oh, I see.
I still get calls on the city line and I turn.
Well, turning off city cell phones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because these, we're still in traction for those and we don't even know where they're at.
We got the fire department one, we can turn it off, we use our personal phones, so.
Okay, so you guys don't need anything from us, okay?
The numbers.
That's good to know.
Somebody's, somebody's using them?
No, nobody's using them.
Nobody's using them.
Well, that's just a standard fee. Oh, my word.
Well, the Jerry just heard them say that the fire department one, they don't even use it. They use their personal phones. So, we, that's ridiculous to have that one. So, yeah, I, I'm gonna make a motion, we, if we're not using them, let's get them disconnected.
How many, how many phones do you have to turn on, one, two?
A second.
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and vote on sealed bids for the Brimstone property.
Wendy got a notification today from the attorney that said that we have to have, um, a hearing, it has to be posted in the paper. And, um, we have to have a hearing before we can sell the property. So we, what we thought we were gonna be able to open the sealed bids and do tonight, we can't work it.
Did you look through your packet? I put it in, in everybody's packet. He sent him a resolution for the.
The res, okay. Um, so can we do this tonight, or we still can't do it tonight?
I think so, because it says, "Adopted and approved on September eleventh."
Oh, okay, my mistake. I haven't gotten back to you after, um, so we can go ahead and open the sealed bids? Okay?
Is this a lot of price is right again?
Maybe, I've never been on the price is right, I'm not sure, so.
Go ahead, Paul.
You don't have.
I'm gonna approve the corruption.
It's not, it's just like hate back.
Aye.
Okay, we got a bid for one thousand eleven dollars and fifty cents from Kellyanne Musa. And Spencer Kirk for eight hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, what was the first one? I was, I was reading.
Thousand eleven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
And Kellyanne Musa and then Spencer Kirk for eight hundred.
Okay.
So how much do lots usually go for in town?
Well, the one that the city owned over there by the Methodist Church, one for three hundred. What did the one that, uh, uh, France go for? That's the only other one I know that was sold recently.
I.
I think it sold for five hundred.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
France, over there.
Oh, Randy?
Yeah.
I don't.
No, I'm not Randy.
I don't have any.
Is that Brandon's lot, isn't that more than one lot though?
Well, it depends on is it big lots or small lots. It's.
There was a bigger, bigger lot.
There was how many big lots?
Four.
Four big lots?
No, it wasn't four big lots, it was just a bigger lot, I think.
Everybody's considering whole property, you know, that's not through law, is it?
No, I thought it was the whole property.
It's one property as a whole.
Those four, it's lots one through four.
Because that's how we acquired it as one.
Lot.
Lot.
You think we're gonna get more money than that?
No.
I, I would be surprised and, you know, I feel like for us right now, I mean, we're, we're losing our backside on it, but what are we gonna do, keep, you know, keep having to keep it up and all this?
When you look at the location a bit and you look at what those other two brought, I'm pretty sure, I know my brother paid three hundred for the one next to the Methodist Church.
Right.
I'm pretty sure France paid five hundred for that.
Right.
So, if you look at the location where that was at, I think we should let it go.
I make a motion we accept Kellyanne Deamon's bid.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
In that deal, he has to handle the permits for.
He's gotta do all of that.
Yeah, yeah, he's gotta.
Now, we have to have something else next meeting about this.
Mm-hmm, okay. Wait, it'll actually come out in for a public hearing if anybody has objections to it.
And if nobody does, then after that time, then he goes and gets a transfer and, and we're done. Okay, good, thank you.
Moving on, right?
Yep.
Public carrying off authorization of loan and disbursements agreement and issuance of notes to evidence of the obligation of the city there under. I should use my magnifying glass.
So explain that. So this is the next part of the sewer project. If anybody has any thoughts or whatever, this is supposed to be public hearing time for.
Well, I have to talk. Who's gonna clean the manholes down by me?
Who's gonna take them, take the cover trucking and get them ready? Well, I can tell you that I worked this afternoon running a jackhammer, getting some of them uncovered as Jerry was going around marking them for me. And, um, since our city man up and quit this morning with no notice, um, what we need to do is hire somebody to do it. I can, I can do what I can and I will certainly help out, but it's, you know.
Even, even if we had to hire somebody part-time for the manual labor, doing what she's doing to get these opened up, because if you can't stay ahead of the people doing the cleaning, they're gonna pull out somewhere else and we got this opened up. The, I says, "How come you didn't give us any notice?" I didn't know until Wendy, she told me it's coming, not the first she knew it. She said, "This guy's almost for a day," I'm like, "Think of it." Said, "We were, you were aware of this four months ago, and this was supposed to have been done, we figured it, all we've done by now."
Our straight man knew.
We didn't, we weren't informed, I guess.
He, he said that our city maintenance man had been informed four months ago that these were supposed to be uncovered.
This is, now this is just what these workers told me. So I, I don't know, I'm very.
Well, why didn't they say something at the meeting Wednesday? When we were talking about this? And, and I remember sitting there and saying, "Does he need help? Can we get Kelly?" And you said, "No, Kelly's too busy." And I said, "Should we get somebody else?" "Oh, no."
Kelly is busy.
And, and I get that, and I'm, I'm not upset about that. But we, we kind of discussed this.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't know, we weren't the ones that were notified. Apparently, the city maintenance employee was notified four months ago and the ball was drawn, is what we are being told. We don't have any information.
I get that part, you don't have to explain it to me again, I got it.
Then, then.
But I'm saying, those guys sat here.
Right.
Wednesday and didn't say a damn word.
They, they might, I don't know that.
They, they called the day before and said they were coming.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they knew that they weren't uncovered. I, I don't know.
And that is the beginning of some of the problems. I wouldn't aware of it, because I'm really particular about calling Iowa one call, not knowing to take a lid off of sewer, like a manhole that fits down this, this far, this far, you have to call one call. Well, under penalty of Iowa law.
We were on the phone this morning.
Who would have thought, you know, I, I told these guys who were digging, just digging straight down the raised lid, well, the jackhammer might, might jiggle the ground and disrupt, yes.
We spent an hour and a half this morning on the phone, getting feedback.
Took both of us, you could only get a permit for three blocks.
Per ticket.
Per concrete.
And how much does that cost?
It, it doesn't free, nothing.
But it's very time consuming.
And they won't come right away.
So where are we, so where, where are we on this project? Where, where are we on this project then?
Well, we're so far.
We're still.
Thanks to Paula, we're, we're ahead, we're coming for another day or two.
We're still ahead of them. They went from north across the tracks to over on the west side of town, then they were dropping down to Sunset and then coming up, like past the pool and that way, and then they will start moving east.
They have a system. They know which way the water flows, they have a system. They do this section and all goes this way, that's the section. I can't jump or they don't like to jump inside, 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 inside. They do all certain sections at a time. I had a long talk with them and I said, "Well, just work with us, you see what kind of shape we're in." And so, they're gonna discuss it, but we'll stay ahead on the best of terms. We get way behind.
We're, I, I think that we're, we're gonna have to hire somebody, um, part-time to do it, like a, after hours or something.
Okay, so, uh, what we need to do is get back to what this, what we're really supposed to be discussing. The public hearing on the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city there under. So this is just another step that we have to approve to keep this project going. Am I, am I, does that correct? Does anybody under, everybody understand that part of it?
Yes.
Yes.
I am.
I understand.
The thing is, we really don't have the time to hire a full-blown.
City person.
City person.
Right.
Okay, but I want us, I want us to stay on task and do this letter F. I am gonna make the motion that we authorize a loan in this first one agreement, evidence obligation of the, of the city there under.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And this is to hire somebody for part-time?
No, no, this, this is just legal stuff that has to do with the whole lagoon project. It, it's not that yet. G.
So. We shouldn't be looking for, to hire somebody for.
We're, we're going to, but we're not there yet.
But we're on this discussion.
Going down the road.
We're on H, right?
No, we're on G.
I thought we just approved that.
No, that was the one above it, that was L.
Vote and approve resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
And that all, once again, has to do with this whole lagoon project and I make a motion to vote and approve the resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action in this lagoon project.
Second.
Aye.
I'm sorry, you guys, I can't see and I forgot my hearing agent.
Your agent.
Agree, vote and approve resolution approving or authorizing a form of interim loan and disapproval for authorizing and providing for the issues and securing payment through a twenty thousand dollar sewer revenue capital of the code of I and providing for remanenti of payment of said notes.
I make the motion that we approve.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Department, the force mayor, I'm just gonna, I should keep my mouth shut. Because I got this sewer deal on my mind, that's what I want done. I want everything to get it done. Anybody else, council got anything else to say?
I do. You were trying to talk about the city worker position. I think that we should have maybe, it sounds special, I mean, a work, a work.
Work session.
Work session. We have that and several things we need to discuss. Can we set a time that we could agree that we could meet and have this? Um, Wednesday afternoon?
Well, here's something that might have to come before that. We're gonna have to try to find somebody to do some labor, to keep up with this thing. We don't wanna be having a bunch of meetings, we need to get somebody just for that. We're not hiring for a city worker, just.
Right.
I think if we could meet Wednesday afternoon, I'm saying Wednesday afternoon, I don't know.
You say head that one?
Or if we can meet Tuesday night, Tuesday evening.
Tuesday is probably.
Right, because we need to try to hire someone as fast as possible. Just for that, nothing else.
Right, but I mean, we can talk about that, but there's a couple other things that need our attention that we can discuss and throw up. So can we?
Thank you, Sean.
So can we?
Thank you.
Two, is it too late to do Tuesday, tomorrow night for a special session? So the soonest we could do it is Wednesday. Do you still work, Mickey? Yeah, you know, can't, can't do one, so two o'clock on Wednesday. Would that work for, unless she's a jackhammer?
I may not be able to make it, but.
Okay, so let's, let's shoot for Wednesday, this Wednesday, two P M. Here, can you do your magic? Thank you. And we're calling this a work session.
Yeah, but, but we are gonna, um, vote on probably hiring somebody.
Well, we might not have it, but, but we need to be able to have authority to do it, so we're.
Right.
Not wasting time, because it ain't gonna take long to get hired.
It, right, that's correct.
I've got two or three. In fact, the wind stream man that was doing these, one call. He says, "Why is this a work site?" I said, "It's because the gas company required it to be a work site." And what happened to your man? I said, "He just said, 'They want it.'" "Is the job open?" And I said, "Yeah." And I says, "W-" He says, "What's the ban?" I says, "I don't know for sure, he's on the top of the ladder, you, you get where you start that high." So give me his number. If you guys are interested.
Um, I believe we might be. Uh, I think this will be a topic of our conversation, but I think if there's other things we all need to talk about, let's bring our ideas, thoughts to this Wednesday. I mean, we're gonna have.
Well, I'll give you guys a number and a due.
Well, yeah, this week, we're gonna have to have.
Still the laborers in town, I haven't talked to them yet, but.
Right.
They're, they're hard workers.
Um, yeah. Uh, then, the swimming pool, like, we all have the information from the swimming pool. Um, the total through the door for the season was two thousand five hundred and seventy-three, and that does not include, um, any aerobics classes. And then there were some people that just didn't ever sign the sheet at the end of the swim. So, um, we had a really good turnout, um, this last year and a lot of donations that we're very thankful for, so it was a good, it was a good season for us. Anybody?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. Thank you for the pool report, but you didn't give me the information that I've asked for for the last two years, so I went ahead and did it on my own. And I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just curious. So, we spent almost twenty-one hundred dollars on, on salaries, which, lot of hours, a lot of people working, so I thought that was pretty, um, close. Um, I'm guessing, just taking off of last month's, uh, for the chemicals and what Black Hills charged us, over the three-month period, salaries and everything, we spent about thirty thousand dollars to operate the pool. I think that's bad.
It, you know, it, it doesn't seem, when you think of the people that really came together for the pool.
So I, I think, I think that was good, and you did get a lot of donations.
We did, we did.
So I'm done with the pool for this year.
Okay, well, and.
Oh, no, I'm not, no, I'm not, I got one more.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know if you said this at the last meeting, when, when you were talking about donations and stuff, but we need to bring up Janice and Buzz Costenson and all of the time that they donated to the pool.
Yes, and I think I brought it up, but I'll tell you, up until the last meeting, they did not want their names mentioned. They just kind of were going under the radar, they didn't want it.
I saw it.
Yeah, and that's.
They've told me that too, they don't want their name.
Yeah, but, but they have, and, and Buzz has, you know, he, he knows the underbelly of that, um.
Well, and I've seen him up here working at the community center on weekends pulling weeds and stuff, because I stopped and asked him, because I didn't, I didn't recognize him.
Right. Yeah.
So I'm sorry, Janice, the, the.
Yeah, that's, that's all right, they.
Mickey, you're a hundred percent right, they've given so much and I appreciate you bringing their name up.
Yes, yes, because they did, they did do it for.
And then the other thing I want to bring up is the, um, fireman feed is gonna be October fifth, that's a Thursday night. They have a meeting that night, it's seven, we're gonna start feeding them at six, so we're gonna be looking, uh, for some donations. Cherry, again, is going to, um, run that for me, but anybody?
I said I'd help.
Well, last time you wrote help, so.
Cherry, you know her about when you, um, reached out.
So we'll do that to thank them, and any form of firemen that wanna come, you're welcome to come. And, um, that's all my questions. And, um, that's all my questions.
Anything else?
I don't know, nothing.
Why are, why are you, I haven't had time to look at this. Sorry, I got, I didn't say it wrong.
Still not getting the bird, man?
Yes.
No?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
We're getting back.
Sex, Maru.
I know, we're getting good.
We'll see you guys.